Counsel, please take your seats. Ms. Whitby, would you please call the row?
Gibson.
Present.
Yildin.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Berry.
Here.
Bestel.
Here.
Height.
Present.
And Witcher.
Present.
McCormick is present.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. Can we stand for the prayer by Alderman Bestel followed by the pledge by Alderman Berry?
Father, we would pray that you would watch over those young men and women who are doing their service in a hostile environment. We would pray that you would watch over this council as we deliberate on the actions for this city. And we pray that you would touch the lives of those that are sickly. And we would, you know, Father, we'd like to thank you for the resolution in the Elizabeth Smart case. And, Father, we pray that you watch over each and every one of us. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So move? Motion made. The minutes of previous meeting be approved, is submitted, is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Could you read number 10, please?
Yes, sir. This is a letter dated March 5, 2003, to the Honorable Patrick H. Hayes, North Little Rock Mayor. Dear Patrick, thank you for sending me a copy of the North Little Rock City Council's resolution requesting a review by the Federal Railroad Administration of the safety of remote control locomotives. I understand your concern and I appreciate your contacting me. I have contacted Mr. Allen Rutter, Administrator of the Federal Railroad Administration, and have asked him to review your request and provide me with a report. I'll be back in touch with you as soon as I receive a response. Thank you again for giving me an opportunity to try to help sincerely. And this is from Blanche Lincoln, Senator.
Motion for acceptance filed?
Yes.
Motion made, seconded, any discussion? As soon as I receive anything, any communication from anyone regarding this matter, I'll certainly be happy to forward it on the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Sorry. Let me get back to me. Could we read number 5, please?
Sure.
Okay, this is, um...
Whitby, would you just read number 5?
Yes, sir. February 25, 2003, this is a letter from the Arkansas State Highway Commission to the Honorable Tracy Steele, State Senator. Reference is made to your recent inquiry regarding the widening of East Broadway, Highway 70, in North Little Rock. The department has a project scheduled for construction in federal fiscal year 2005. The city of North Little Rock has committed to move the utilities and the department will be responsible for right-of-way acquisition and construction. The facility will be widened four-lane with turn lanes at appropriate locations. This design is consistent with the requirements of Metro Plan for this type of facility. Should you need additional information or if we can be of further assistance, please advise sincerely Dan Flowers, Director of Highways and Transportation.
We have a motion. Well, no motion on that. We are accepting the file. Let me just confirm, I think I might have commented on this last time, that the Highway Department has agreed to undertake the acquisition of right-of-way for the project. They're looking to us for the relocation of utilities. I've already asked Mr. Bowles to work with those utilities that are there and to begin the first stages of understanding who's there and who needs to move so that we can start working with those utilities regarding their relocation and what the cost may be and who may be responsible for those costs so that we can be in a position to work with the Highway Department when construction, I think after many years, Alderman Thomas, looks like it's going to begin in '05. So we're very excited about that and look forward to that project getting underway. But we've got several things to do before they're ready and we've already started working on making sure that the city's responsibility as we work with our partners, you know, water, wastewater, telephone, whatever that happens to be there, is to the relocation of those utilities until they can do it in a timely way.
Does that actually, '05 begin July, a year from now?
That's good. I think the fiscal year begins July '04.
Right.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I'm...
But I, because of the relocation of utilities and my conversations with the Director, I'm fairly comfortable that, pretty much, the remainder of this year and the biggest part of next year will be undertaking in both engineering and relocation of utilities and that construction may very well not start till '05, even though first part of the year, fiscal year begins in '04. So I tried to get a handle on what he thought we'd actually see a shovel turn and it's looking like it would be '05, but we'll be busy between then and now. It definitely is on their plan and they're definitely going to start acquiring right-of-way and, you know, things that we need to do to finally see that project underway.
And that's, that's the 165?
Yeah, wherever your place is.
Yeah, 165. And then just pave from there, I think, is the plan, isn't it?
Excuse me?
Just pave it from there on out to Propho Junction.
They just, oh, I'm not even, I'm not sure if the paving is a part of the other part at this point. I know the total reconstruction of that out to the England Highway is, you know, I'm sure that that may be if needed, but, you know, then we can start trying to work on extending it on out. But to my knowledge right now, you know, that other may be, but I'm not, I haven't been assured of that, is simply to the England Highway.
Of course. We think, we hope that that'll be done even before the pl- the paving.
Are you talking about the paving?
From, from 165 out to Propho Junction.
Yeah, I, you know, I just don't, I haven't been acquiring about that, so, you know, you may be ahead of me on that. On the special call, will you read the first special call, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir. So letter dated March 4, 2003, Honorable Members of the City Council Regarding Special Council Meeting. Dear Members of the City Council, this is to advise that we have called a special council meeting of the North Little Rock City Council for 7:05 PM, March 13, 2003, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. An ordinance amending ordinance number 7411 to release, vacate, and abandon utility easements to streets vacated by ordinance number 7411 and for other purposes, respectfully submitted, Mayor Patrick H. Hayes.
Mayor, before...
How about signatures on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it has been signed by all eight council members.
All right. Do you have something, Alderman, for...
No, we need to get into the ordinance because I think the city attorney has an amendment to it.
Okay. Would you read the, would you read the ordinance, please?
This is an ordinance amending ordinance number 7411 to release, vacate, and abandon utility easements to streets vacated by ordinance number 7411. First reading.
Move, just spin...
Yeah, spin, take it third and then we'll do it.
Spin Rose, place on second reading.
Motion made and seconded, spin the rules on the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 7411 to release, vacate, and abandon utility easements to streets vacated by ordinance number 7411. Second reading.
Then move, spin Rose, place on second reading.
Second.
Gibson.
Pardon me.
Yildin.
On the motion.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Emergency Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 7411 to release, vacate, and abandon utility easements to streets vacated by ordinance number 7411. Third and final reading.
Alderman Gibson.
I believe the city attorney has an amendment to it to add some wording to it that's been passed around.
Mr. Sisson, you going up? Can you explain the amendment?
Yes, Mayor. As you are aware, last November, or I guess two Novembers ago, November 2001, we abandoned some streets and the area come up known as Dark College just west, south of the interstate. Streets that have never existed, have never been developed, matter of fact, trees are there. Well, we had the language in the ordinance, our standard one, that we reserve our easements for utilities. Well, no utility easements exist. And so as a result, as you know, Mayor, that they're hoping to...
Utility easements exist, no utilities remain.
That's correct. I stated that backwards. So as a result, their title company, when they were reviewing it, they asked that we adopt this ordinance in order, they can get title clear because they're trying to sell that property. And so what the title company wanted was the amendment that I had in section one, I've handed out, just adds the Senate's specifically, the city releases, vacates, and abandons all rights that were retained and reserved in section two of ordinance 7411.
Is that your motion, Alderman Gibson?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Motion made and seconded on the motion to amend, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 7411 to release, vacate, and abandon utility easements to streets vacated by ordinance number 7411. Third and final reading.
Alderman Gibson.
I believe the city attorney has an amendment to it to add some wording to it that's been passed around.
Mr. Sisson, you going up? Can you explain the amendment?
Yes, Mayor. As you are aware, last November, or I guess two Novembers ago, November 2001, we abandoned some streets and the area come up known as Dark College just west, south of the interstate. Streets that have never existed, have never been developed, matter of fact, trees are there. Well, we had the language in the ordinance, our standard one, that we reserve our easements for utilities. Well, no utility easements exist. And so as a result, as you know, Mayor, that they're hoping to...
Utility easements exist, no utilities remain.
That's correct. I stated that backwards. So as a result, their title company, when they were reviewing it, they asked that we adopt this ordinance in order, they can get title clear because they're trying to sell that property. And so what the title company wanted was the amendment that I had in section one, I've handed out, just adds the Senate's specifically, the city releases, vacates, and abandons all rights that were retained and reserved in section two of ordinance 7411.
Is that your motion, Alderman Gibson?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Motion made and seconded on the motion to amend, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 7411 to release, vacate, and abandon utility easements to streets vacated by ordinance number 7411. First reading.
Second. Motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 7411 to release, vacate, and abandon utility easements to streets vacated by ordinance number 7411. First reading.
Mayor, there's, Mr. Bowles, this is the one that I was questioning.
This is an unusual situation because it didn't come up in the, it didn't come up in the public hearing at the Planning Commission, but under section two, number four, this special use is to the property owner and not with the applicant.
Right. What happened the last time? We had a lease of the property for daycare and this time we're asking that special, it's trading hands to another party and the owner will have the right to lease a daycare at that location. If they sell it, the special use would go away.
I don't know. And it was proved, you know, antithesis of it.
Yes, it was proved.
I noticed that in the Planning Commission, that Mr. Phillips said he didn't have a problem with the fence as long as it was slatted, but that wasn't in here and it's probably not something we really want to do, is to slat up.
I know that was...
There's a chain link fence in here and this calls for a six-foot privacy fence and it, and it says applicant must provide a six-foot privacy fence around the play area.
That's what the Planning Commission asked for.
So it's going to require a six-foot privacy fence around the play area.
Yes.
Based on this.
Either slating or putting up a wooden fence.
Okay. I'm going to flip it opposite.
Motion made and seconded, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, third and final reading, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
I think we're in the public hearing for the Utility Accounting Committee Policy Review, Policy Recommendations. Let me convene that public hearing. I think Alderman Gibson worked you on that committee and I think we published those recommendations.
We, we did publish those recommendations and I was on that committee, Alderman Witcher was also on that committee. I guess we met three times total. Basically, the major difference is that a person would be required to come into our Utilities Accounting building and produce two forms of ID, one which must be a government-issued picture ID, to have their utilities, to have their North Little Rock electric turned on. And that they would have to pay their deposit at the time they had their electricity turned on instead of having it billed to them at some future date. And that we set, and then, that's the key ingredients. The other, the deposits stay the same, the ability to charge someone who gets behind their payments to raise their deposit, that's still in effect.
If I had utilities and turned them off and moved out of town, came back and had a pretty, a good payment record with the, with the Utilities Accounting Department and wanted to restart those utilities, would I be able to do that without coming down showing the ID?
No. Well, I don't know about that particular one, Mayor, we didn't ask you. I would assume that in that situation, we would look and see, but we didn't particularly talk about someone moving out. The problem is, is how do we know when you call on that phone, that's really Patrick Henry Hayes who's moving back into that house? Or moving into the city? Give you social security number. Well, I tell you, it's fine to test the system. Alexander Bibb has a social security number and Alexander Bibb can have utilities. He calls up utilities and said, "I'm moving into North Little Rock and can, on Friday afternoon, can you turn my utilities on?" And my social security number's da-da-da-da-da-da. Would you turn my utilities on? Well, they look up Alexander Bibb on the records and Alexander Bibb doesn't have any bad credit references anywhere. And so Alexander Bibb, and we would bill him his deposit.
How old is Mr. Bibb?
Four. Just turned five.
I knew that.
And so what happens is, here's a situation. A person, a person calls to the department, maybe a legitimate person, and we say, "Sure, Ms. Jones," or whomever, "we will turn your electricity on on Friday and we will bill you for your $100 deposit." Well, not only does Ms. Jones not pay her $100 deposit, she also doesn't pay her first month's bill. And so we're into our second month bill and I believe $500 probably is not an understatement of how much they can owe us before.
If it's in the higher, you know, it's a higher...
But they could owe us 300 easy.
Yeah.
Before we go out there and send a shut-off notice, which cost us money, send a person out there to turn it off, maybe twice. And under circumstances, if it's real hot or real cold, we can't turn it off. It's, that's, that's the policy of the department. And so we have got to find a way to plug the loophole that's seen our dead debts rise from the 300 and something thousand range to the 700 and something thousand. Is that close by?
Last year it was seven, about 700,000. Prior year it was 950,000.
So since we've changed to this policy of being able to call in, we have seen soaring charge-offs. Now, I got to understand, well, they say, "Well, Chicopee's part of that. Chicopee hadn't reached the charge-off point yet." That's another set of things. Surprisingly, I thought that when we reviewed the list, that we would find perhaps a lot of commercial in this. There's not. There is some commercial in there, but a tremendous amount of it is in different areas across the city, which are high rental areas. And we end up losing significant amounts of money. But anybody could, under the present system, you could, I'm not going to say you could make up, and we've talked about doing some things that would, would help them, like for the deposit only, where they could do it on a charge card. Give them that option to be able to do that, you know, that they could, only for the deposit. And, but we've got to find a way that we're not charging off 900 or 700,000. And if we can cut it 200 or $300,000, that's money that this city and the citizen can use for a lot of different things.
Those recommendations, just second, Alderman. Those recommendations, I know they were in the last council packet. I don't know that we have them in front of us now.
I don't know. I have a, I have extra, two copies.
But they do not, everything that's in there is allowed under existing ordinances within the city.
Just second, Alderman. If anybody has any questions about what, what those policies are, you know, please address them. But at this point, I'm going to turn the floor over to Alderman Thomas and then I'm going to open the floor for comments.
I guess one thing that bothers me is that the ones that's not paying is going to create a real hardship for all the others. I just, I'm just thinking here, I don't see former Mayor Lehman having to come down and get a utility change. I think they could do it as we've been doing all years and there's many other people like that. So that's the reason that I felt that we're going to really have a lot of flack over this because so many people pay theirs on time. It's those few that don't that creates the hardship and I just hate to see that happen.
Any other comments from the council before I open up the floor? Alderman, Yildin?
Well, I don't think the hardship, Mayor Lehman's not going to be moving someplace or moving out of town and then coming back and getting his lights turned on. And, and so it's, it's not going to affect anybody, but anybody that's, that's living here now, yeah, if you, if you move and you come back, you're going to have to go down there, you're going to have to give some ID. But the way it is now, they could call down there and say, you, so I could, you know, and I, I was wanting to do this and they, and Paul says, "Oh, you better not." I was wanting to call down there and use, use your name maybe and say, "Turn on these lights, electricity over here at such and such street." And then have them do it and then have, you know, because it could happen today. And we don't, and you wouldn't want that and nobody would. And, you know, we've got to do something to help the, the problem. We've got too much write-offs and also the fraud that could happen in the system the way it is is, is just, is just not good. And you wouldn't like it if somebody did that. And I guarantee you, it's happened and it's just been a write-off. Somebody said, "Well, I didn't turn on any, any electricity and, and, you know, this cause it's in my name." And you ought to have to come down. I mean, we're not going to have to do it. You're not going to have to do it. You're here, you're not moving, you're not going anywhere. That's it. But if somebody moves in here, they need to go down there and show some ID and, and then get it turned on. Because people just move around from one place to the next and use a different name and their kid's name and everything else. And, and it's, it's not good.
I mean, one other thing, I'm sorry.
Well, you know, I mean, that's fine, but I'm, the one thing I'm concerned about is some of the people who don't have a ride to come down and do this. Are we, are we going to find some way that we can...
They found a way to move there. They found a way to move there.
Yeah.
Number one, we're, we're going, we're sending North Little Rock electric people out to 80 places a day. Isn't it 80 now? 80 places a day to either give shut-off notices or to turn off electricity. It is a tremendous load on that department and they have not come close to catching up. I'm sorry, but are they going to have to come down there? Yes.
Comments?
I guess, what about the water company? Do we, will that be the same? Do we, can we call them or we have to go over there to Little Rock? I know that's another department.
Another deal.
But now...
All right, the public hearing, microphones open. Anybody care to comment?
Can't, but you pay your money.
Going once, going twice, turn to public comment section. What's, what's our next step, Alderman?
Mr. Sisson, Mayor, everything is in place now to make this change. This policy was changed from not having to show an ID to having to show an ID without a vote of this council. It was a policy decision within the UAD. And I simply is asking UAD to go back to their previous policy.
I tell you what, I'm going to take these as recommendations. I'm going to visit with Mr. Sisson and UAD and talk about the implementation of it and then I'll inform the council what of, if not all, of the recommendations that we intend to pursue.
My only concern, I don't have a problem with, with it, but when I think about people with disabilities, you know, if there are any, any special things in place for people with disabilities that will be renting places and, you know, because...
I believe the disabled are exempt from deposit.
They are exempt.
And over 65, I believe, or at least, is it over 65? They are exempt from deposits.
People with disabilities and people that are over the age of 65 are exempt.
From deposits.
From deposits, yes.
But they are still required to come and show IDs under this recommendation.
Okay. So I just want us to, to look into that as far as people with disabilities because some people may not, with disabilities, may not be able to get down there.
Well, perhaps we can find a way to deal with that as far as going out there. But one of the, one of the unique problems we have, and we've had this more than once, is a person with a disability rents the house, but they are not the prime person who lives[1512.87] is a person with a disability rents the house, but they are not the prime person who lives there.
Let me work with utilities accounting and then see if there's some answers that we might be able to deal with. We, we've got to go out there to turn the power on and, and maybe there's some way we can deal with that.
Under that, we could collect the, to do the picture ID and, and, and collect the deposit.
Yeah, that might be a good answer.
Yeah.
Alderman?
Yeah. We've got, you stated we have eighty instances a day that we have to go out and either turn somebody's power off or-
Or do a door hanger.
Do a door hanger or whatever. How many new deposits do we have a day that's not figured, calculated in that eighty? Is that separate from new deposits?
Yes, sir, that's, I would assume, new deposit, five or, at the most, five, ten a day. I don't know, does he keep up, how many new people move in? You know, I, I don't know for sure. I would assume less than, less than ten a day. There are four or five on the eighty list that would have, have not paid their deposits if that-
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, new deposit request daily, if we add that to the eighty, we're close to ninety a day then.
Or eighty-five.
Yeah.
But, but the eighty's not catching up.
That's what I'm saying. That's why, that's the reason I brought this up, is that eighty doesn't include the potential loss of the deposit on the new deposits request, people calling up now and requesting service turned on with a new deposit, right? We're taking that over the phone presently, correct? Under the new, new policy and procedures, they have to come down and face-to-face, show proof of ID, right? What are the modes of payment that we're gonna allow? You said charge card is one.
Cash.
Cashier's check or sort of, I check.
Cash, check.
No personal checks.
A week, weeks, we accept personal checks.
Let, let me suggest, let me suggest that we move on 'cause Mr. Sisson and I, along with utilities accounting, will review these recommendations, will communicate to the council by letter at the next council meeting. Then obviously if the council wants to take action, change any of that and, you know, take that step. Uh, presentations, Mr. Grace?
Mayor, could you step down a minute, please?
This is Robin Alexander, she's the president of our Friends of Animals, North Little Rock Friends of Animals.
He don't get a cookbook free, does he? In ten bucks.
On behalf of the North Little Rock Friends of Animals membership, we would like to present you your copy of the North Little Rock Friends of Animals cookbook. And if I may, I'd like to read an inside page which is dedicated to you and was written by one of our members, Robert Hustetler. "A special thank you. The proof is in the leadership and for years that leadership has come from our mayor and friend, the Honorable Patrick Henry Hayes. With a special love for animals and sense of responsibility to the public, Mayor Hayes has proven that you can have a city with fewer problems caused by stray animals and solve these problems in a humane way. We salute you, loyal servant to the people, and thank you deeply and sincerely, North Little Rock Friends of Animals."
Well, thank you very much, Robin. And let me also thank the council, uh, you know, the, the city council is the one that adopted the legislation, that, that the differentiation in spay neuter fees and, and, and things that, that were a critical partner. So, I'd like to ask all of us to thank the North Little Rock City Council for this. In addition to the Friends of Animals, and I know that, that, that you're giving me this, but you're also selling this for ten dollars a, a copy. And so, let me, even though you've given it to me, let me just give you a, a ten dollar bill to go with, uh-
Thank you very much.
-where that is heading and, and the only thing that I indicated to Mr. Grace that I was a little disappointed in, and, and tell you, tell you what, let me, let me double that. The only thing that I-
Play it for mine later.
Yeah, I'll play it for yours, Alderman. The only thing that I was a little disappointed in, that I was told there were pictures of several animals in there and Toby, my dog, was not one of them.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
But that's quite all right. I was assured that next year-
He'll be in the next.
That he'll be in the next one. So, let me, let me just underline my appreciation to, to, to our, our, our staff, Billy Grace and his staff, to Friends of the Animals, uh, you know, to the council, to the community. Uh, you know, truly a difference has been made and I, I, I would like to underline Mr. Grace's leadership. He is, uh, has been relentless, relentless in bringing ideas to us and, and I had the opportunity to support those ideas. So, you know, I think we all owe Billy Grace a real round of applause. So, let's do that.
And there's books for sale outside the door when you leave and also Diane Whitby, the city clerk's office has them and the animal shelter. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. And anybody that has business here tonight, before we vote on, we wanna see you with a booklet. Uh, I tell you what, we're gonna, Mr. Rhodes, go ahead. Uh, let's get you down and then we have Mr. Roberts, uh, on the agenda.
Okay, I've got a couple of little things I wanna mention first before we get into the presentation, but, uh, some of y'all have been interested in the dog park. Uh, that issue is still alive and well. There will be a public he, hearing, excuse me, next Thursday at six o'clock at the community center to make, uh, final discussion and recommendations concerning that. Uh, also, if the mayor would come back down here, I have another little presentation. This is something that just happened last week, uh, before this could be on the agenda. But, uh, as you know, we have a soccer complex. It received this year the Arkansas Recreation and Parks Association Sports Facility Award. And again, that's a, the soccer complex is truly a community effort. That's all the way from the mayor being involved in the initial idea with the soccer community to the city council and the Parks and Recreation, uh, Commission supporting, uh, an additional one cent hamburger tax, which fifty percent of that was to go for capital improvements. Uh, this is just, this is an award and this is for the state, but the real award is, if you'll remember what the public said last year about it when the, we had hosted the regional soccer tournament here. Uh, we are going to bid on that in two thousand and six and they've gone from a hundred and forty-four teams to a hundred and eighty teams and one additional day. So, they'll be here instead of six days, they'll be here seven days if we, uh, are successful in receiving that, that award. But of all things, I guess, that really tells you that you've got a good facility, uh, that's when people come to see your facility and they've heard about it. And, uh, in April, there'll be a, a group from Orlando, Florida with their architect coming to see our complex to get some ideas to model their complex after. But this is just a token appreciation to all of y'all for your support and the mayor's. Thanks.
Wow, thank you. Let me, you stand there just a second. Let me turn around and, and give this back to you and, and I know you can find a place down there, uh, in your department. Uh, and truly, you know, we were, you know, we were second teamers. I know Alderman Gibson and I went out there once or twice and, and indeed, you know, the comments that were made and recorded in the, in the paper about going through a windy road and then where did we turn out into was soccer heaven, uh, made all of us proud and, and recognized the work that, you know, that we did and the sporting ways that you and your staff did at the front doorway. So, let me in turn, uh, give this back to you and tell you, thanks for what you do and find a good place for that. Keep, keep our assets well.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor might mention that he, uh, indicated there might be a possibility for you to sell a bunch of cookbooks to those people coming in for looking at the soccer complex.
We'll have cookbooks out there and, uh, uh, let's see, Mr. Rhodes, uh, it's ten dollars on the way out. I know you gotta go see a soccer game tonight.
Soccer game my son is playing.
And, uh, and, 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 and the price of early adjournment for you, Mr. Rhodes, is a cookbook on the way out.
Can you loan me, loan me ten? Look at there, see?
Your credit's good with Mr. Grace, I'm sure.
Okay. Okay, um, what I'll say as an introduction, uh, since I've been here, we have focused mainly on, mainly, and this is not totally, uh, all true, but we have focused on development, uh, capital improvements. Uh, things are slowing down, more, more time and emphasis is being spent on, on me helping the community centers. Uh, they have done a, a great job and I have all the staff here and I'll introduce them. Uh, these are the center directors from each center. Belinda Wilson is with, uh, the community center as well as she's interim recreation superintendent. Katrina Welborn with Glendale, uh, she's the center director there. Renee Henson with Sherman Park. Linda Parker with North Heights. And then Jeannie Cunningham with, uh, what we call Our Club. That's a collaboration with the county and, uh, that's, uh, one of our key tutorial programs and we have tutorial programs in all the centers. And, uh, we have, uh, we're working together to promote the centers and tell everybody in the community what's going on. There is a lot going on in the community centers. And I wanna also thank Scott Romine, he helped in the production of this, uh, video. And then also Steve Norbcek, uh, Navorecck did all of the interviews. And, uh, if Robert will help me, we will just show the video, it's twelve minutes long, but this really gives you a flavor of what goes on in the centers.
Thank you very much. One of the requirements we're gonna make in the future is any video over five minutes popcorn has to be provided.
It's a place, a safe place for kids to go and enjoy recreational activities, all the way from basketball to arts and craft projects. We even have tutoring programs, uh, different, different slants on tutoring programs in all of our recreation centers, which also gives a, a child a place to go after school that, where somebody can help them with their studies. Our recreation program, we have four centers, uh, and we dedicate over twenty employees year-round to those centers and also in the summer we'll add an additional approximately twenty-five employees. Uh, we have, uh, uh, North Little Rock Community Center, which is, uh, a center basically that's an opportunity for people to come and rent that facility. Uh, they have various sized meeting rooms. We, uh, carry on, uh, gymnastics program in that facility as well, as well, as well as it hosts a lot of special events such as, uh, regional boxing.
It's just an integral part of my life and it has certainly been very, very important, uh, to the youngsters of North Little Rock because they always knew that they had a place to go, they knew that they had a, a nice facility, uh, that they could showcase their competitive juices in. City of North Little Rock has been a blessing and a Godsend, not only to the youngsters in North Little Rock, but statewide and in this case with Silver Gloves, uh, regionally.
We also have Glendale, uh, three other centers, of which all three centers have with them swimming pools. One's Glendale Recreation Center, Sherman Park Recreation Center and North Heights Community Center. These three centers have a variety of programs all the way, for in the summer, they have a, a summer program, uh, day program for, uh, parents to leave their children, uh, for daycare during that time. Uh, they have opportunities for swimming lessons, uh, daily swimming, field trips to various, uh, community activities. They have, uh, in the wintertime, we have a basketball league, basketball program for kids as young as, uh, three and four-year-olds that we call our Tiny Talk, Tiny Talks program. Uh, and it's really, uh, really exciting and fun for the parents just to watch the kids try to play basketball. Uh, Glendale has a special program for, uh, health clinic, uh, screening once a week. Uh, the neighborhood's able to come in and, and have immediate access to a clinic, uh, for evaluation and other health needs.
This clinic offers to people who have no way, no insurance, no way of getting any, no means to get, uh, medical care. People who are gentle, nice people, people who are just, uh, they just don't have the things that they need to get medical care and we provide those things for them.
We have about a thousand patients that we service in this community, in this general area and I would say of the thousands, maybe seventy-five percent, we provide all their medicines and all of their medical care completely to them. There is nowhere else.
At all three of those sites, we have various, uh, types of tutoring programs. Uh, all of them are unique in their own way and they do a, an incentive program, the more, the more lessons you do and do properly, but the more books you read, the more points you get so that you accumulate points and you're able to buy merchandise at the, uh, Our Club store. Some of the girls' activities we have, uh, at some of the centers, we do have, uh, cheerleading squads that support the basketball teams and football teams. And then we also have beauty pageants throughout the year. Uh, the winners get to participate in the annual Christmas parade, uh, and, and attend other functions. We have a wide variety of martial arts in all of the centers. We have, uh, Aikido, Karate, Taekwondo and, and Boxing. Uh, and this is a good outlet for, for the kids that wanna be involved and adults, we have adult programs too. Uh, but this gives a, a, a child an opportunity to learn a skill and a discipline.
When the kids come and one of the things I've always insisted that, that all the children learn to do and insist that they do and tell all the parents as well, that all the students will say, "Yes, sir, no, ma'am, yes, sir," and not just to me, but to each other and instill respect for themselves. And I also insist that they all learn what we call our dojo youth chant. And our dojo youth chant is no drugs, no mess, I will always do my best. And I always tell them and use myself as, as an example that you can only do your best, you cannot do what everybody else can do.
When I first started out, it was really for my boys to get them in some, you know, activity, other activities other than basketball. Uh, my brother, my little sister, we've always been exposed to community centers, uh, and the different people that come in. And now, as an adult, I bring my kids as well because it was a good experience for me, so I know it would be good for them. Um, I don't think my people skills would be as strong as they are now if it wasn't for the experience that I had with the community centers.
Growing up in the twenty-first century is a lot more challenging and difficult than growing up when I did, uh, in the fifties and sixties, uh, here in North Little Rock. Uh, and, and this community, this city has recognized that we have an obligation to go out and compete for the time of our young people, to give them things to do that will tempt them to do good instead of to get into trouble. And these recreation centers that we have here in our city are a terrific tool that gives our folks a chance to compete on a quality level, uh, for the time of our young people. And, and I don't have a doubt in my mind, uh, that that competition is not only good for us as a community, but good for each of those individual young people who take advantage of North Little Rock and our community centers.
I spent most of my day every summer at the community center. I was there when they started building and when it got built, we just started going. I mean, I'd never played pool before and we had to play pool every day, ping pong, bumper pool, you never got to do those things. And all of a sudden, there's a place that's got all of it. I'd never played basketball until then, ever. And, uh, had to learn how to dribble basketball. I was a little embarrassed playing with some of the guys that could play, but I still learned how. At that time, I met, uh, Wood Cox, which is half owner of my business here. He and I formed a real good relationship with that. I would've never met him if it hadn't been for North Heights Community Center. Uh, when I was boxing, he was keeping the time for me. If I were playing basketball, playing basketball together, we were good friends. That all developed from the community center. I, I won the Golden Gloves seventy-two, seventy-three, run-up seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven. And, uh, it was always good for me, uh, helped me in my life because I was, like they can go on that wrong street, helped me out, put me back where I was supposed to, coached me to do the things I wanted to do. Uh, from there, uh, as I got married, had kids, I've got three daughters, two of them coach basketball teams, one of them coaches a volleyball team. Kids we don't particularly know. Uh, I think that came from me being involved with kids and being involved with them. And that learning all came from being a member of the community center.
I feel like that any place there is a building, it needs to be utilized, not just one day a week or one evening a week, but it needs to be used by the public for which it was built. And I think this building and this, uh, situation is certainly doing that.
We listen to the people that no one listens to. We care about the people that nobody cares about. And it's kind of a thing, you know, St. Vincent leans on the commission for the building in North Little Rock and they turn lean on St. Vincent's.
Truly, uh, for us in this community, uh, we lean on those rec centers, uh, and, uh, and the support they give us, uh, is, uh, is without question.
And we wanna underline our appreciation to Scott Romine, a talent that continues to grow and, uh, and was begun with our NLR TV program when Scott was in high school. Now, one of our, uh, uh, North Little Rock police officers and we're proud of his, uh, his growth and, uh, and as, as well as the community being able to enjoy your talent. Scott, we thank you and I think, round of applause to Scott Romine. Mr. Roberts, uh, microphone's yours. Uh, we're gonna have a presentation, comments, uh, on, uh, Mr. Roberts is, is a course, a piece of correspondence we've already filed as the executive director of Regional Solid Waste Management District, uh, and, uh, is, uh, going to share with us an opportunity with regard to, uh, recycling, a recycling collection route. And if you would, uh, take the microphone, uh, John, and let us know, you know, some of what you are, are giving us the opportunity to take advantage of and then stand for questions. Uh, the floor's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel a little inadequate since I didn't bring you a present tonight, so. I feel a little inadequate since I didn't bring you a present tonight, so I'll make that.
You'd buy a cookbook on the way out.
I'll buy two, I'll say. You did say you had a copy of the letter, that does every, because I have handouts on that if anyone needed. There's some important numbers in there.
That was for consumption, communication number one.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the City Council, thank you for letting me address this meeting. Tonight, we're here to discuss curbside recycling in North Little Rock. We've got some numbers for you to consider. We've got some compelling reasons for you to consider curbside recycling for North Little Rock, and we're here to answer any questions that you might have about curbside recycling or recycling in general. When I say "we," the contractor for curbside, all of our drop-off center recyclings here in Plaski County, and which we refer to as the district, is Waste Management. I have from Waste Management George Wheatley here, and Wayne Rathman back in the corner. I'm gonna invite them up in just a few minutes to just give you a little bit of an idea of, of what they do and how they do it, and then to answer questions with me.
You need to introduce Mr. Wheatley as a former mayor of Magnolia, if I'm not mistaken.
That's right, who had the first recycling program here in the state. I learned earlier tonight, is Magnolia was the first, first city to have it. Please note in the letter that you have from me to Mayor Hayes that I mentioned the price reduction we've been able to negotiate for curbside recycling in the district. This is based on what the city of Little Rock is presently paying for its curbside recycling program. Their rate's presently $1.99 per household. On May 6th of this year, we'll drop this to $1.80 per household, thanks to a good bid submitted by Waste Management during our RFP process earlier this year. The price gets even sweeter if North Little Rock initiates curbside recycling this May. It drops to $1.75 per household per month. Now, stop and consider this rate. For about what it costs for a gallon of gasoline today, the citizens of North Little Rock can have someone come by their home and pick up their recycling every week. That's a little over forty cents a week on the average. Please be aware that our contract with Waste Management calls for an annual Consumer Price Index, or CPI increase on the rate charge. This has been averaging between two and three percent every year. We'll talk about cost later, but there are two other very important factors considered in this equation. First, quality of life for the folks of North Little Rock. This week, I received a call from Martha Gregory of 2209 Crestwood here in North Little Rock. She told me how wonderful she thought it would be to have curbside recycling in her city. She talked about taking her recyclables to Kroger out on McCain, and how she just knew that if more, that more of her neighbors would recycle if they had the convenience of curbside recycling. I asked her to come and be with me tonight to express this to you in person, but she couldn't. Seems she's babysitting her grandchildren, they were the ones that got her involved with recycling. Second other point to consider is the effect that increased recycling could have on your environment. Increased recycling plainly and simply diverts more materials from your landfill. The hidden costs to air, water, and soil quality, not to mention energy usage in the vicinity, is growing every day. One of the responsibilities that your Solid Waste Management District Board is charged with is to protect the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens living in the district. As Vice Chairman of our Board, Mayor Hayes knows the efforts we make every day to do whatever we can to help preserve our environment for future generations. I have another handout here from Waste News. What I did was just copy off.
If you just hand that to Mr. Sisson, I think he'll help us. We'll just pass them around.
Waste News ran an issue on a municipal recycling survey. This is from the February 17th edition of it. And I just wanted to point out to you, the leading cities in the United States, how many of them had curbside recycling. I think if you'll take a minute to look through that, you can see that. With a little more information on other markets in which Waste Management does business, let me turn the presentation over to George Wheatley for a look at some material that should be of interest to you. George?
Mayor Hayes, before you say anything, you know my wife does not cook.
Doesn't mean you do, but your daughter, I'm sure will.
I must buy a cookbook, right?
More reason why he needs a cookbook.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to address the North Little Rock City Council. As John says, I represent Waste Management. I'm very proud to represent Waste Management. We have just completed a seven-year contract with the city of Little Rock on curbside recycling, where we pick up once a week at the curb recyclables that are put out in an eighteen-gallon bin that is provided by our company. And we do that at fifty-five thousand homes. That material that we collect, the normal recyclable material, tin, aluminum, plastics, newsprint, cardboard, is delivered to our MRF Material Recovery Facility located in the Port Authority. We process approximately thirty-five to fifty tons of recyclable material there per day. That is material that goes back into the market. That's material that does not end up in a landfill, where the city of North Little Rock in this instance would be paying disposal to put it into a landfill. The most exciting thing I can say about recycling today is that Waste Management and the Pels Group have just recently, in the past month, formed an alliance, and these are two of the largest recycling companies in the United States. As a result of this alliance, there are over thirty-three hundred employees in this alliance nationwide. We have eighty facilities across the United States, two of those facilities, one in the Port Authority here in Little Rock, and one in Northwest Arkansas, in the city of Rogers. And they collect and process over eight million tons of recyclable material each year. The types of material collected at our facilities through this alliance are electronics, glass, metal, paper, and plastics. When I was mayor, and, and John heard me say this just a little bit earlier as we made a presentation to the Green Belt Building Council, I was involved in recycling as a mayor. We put in the first comprehensive curbside recycling yard waste and garbage program in the state of Arkansas. We also did recycling, and I think Mayor Hayes and the city of North Little Rock have done this, when we paved our streets. We would grind up part of the material that's on the streets, immediately rejuvenate it, put in some new asphalt with it, and put that old asphalt and, and that mixture right back down, and so we recycled asphalt. But most important, in 1998, 99, my daughter was Miss Arkansas, competed for the title of Miss America, and every contestant who competes for that title must have a critical issue. And her critical issue that year was, we have one earth, one chance, and to protect our environment is absolutely necessary. And she traveled as Miss Arkansas over fifty-eight thousand miles that year in our state, making presentations to city councils, service organizations, civic groups, you name it, school kids, promoting recycling. So it's not just a job with me, and it's not just a job with my family. We really believe it's doing the right thing. We're not here to, to force or attempt to mandate to the city of North Little Rock or any of its citizens recycling. We are here to offer an opportunity and to, to welcome you to be a partner with us. We have a great partnership on our landfill arrangement with you guys already, and we appreciate that very much, and we would offer up that same type of partnership on recycling.
I ask a few questions.
Yes, sir.
On your, on your bin, is that one container that you put everything in, and then you separate it?
Yes, sir. It's, that's the easiest way, Mayor. It's the most simple and, and welcomed way to do it. And only thing we ask is that maybe in a, in a paper sack or a plastic bag, you put your newsprint and your magazines and junk mail, and if you would just bag that, and it's in one end of your container, and the rest of the stuff is just thrown in there, rounded on top of it, whatever, and we take it from there.
How long, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Roberts, or you can answer this, how long is this option to do $1.75 open?
I know it would at least be open until the contract starts in May. If, if we see, you know, a true interest by the city council, I'm sure we can work out whatever needs to be worked out with you, Mr. Roberts.
And what is the proposed length of the contract?
It's a seven-year contract.
Is that renewed annually, or is that, you know, what kind of, I mean, if for some reason in two years, they decided they wanted to back out of it, does that, and maybe our city attorney can address that, does this, does this, this council, can we bind succeeding councils for seven years?
I want to look it up. I, I don't know at this time. I want to research.
Okay. But to your knowledge, George, it's a seven-year lock?
Yes, sir. I'm not an attorney, so I'd hate to, I'd hate to say something contrary to that, but we're confident that, that yes, the city can enter into a multi-year contract on solid waste service.
And, and the only variable in terms of cost is CPI on an annual basis?
Yes, sir. CPI this past year ranged from 1.2 to 2.1 percent.
And so if, if the cost of recyclables went to zero, I mean, it's fairly low now, I think.
Yes, sir.
That does not vary the ability of you to charge. There's no relationship between the cost of recyclables that you receive versus the charge that we're, that we have.
No, sir. No, no obligation on the city's part whatsoever. And by the same token, we're not going to invite you, if they go sky-high, to participate in the sale of them either, but I'm just being facetious there. We, we, it has no impact on the curbside cost to pick up the recyclables.
So if we decide to do it, would we be able to negotiate with you and somehow receive a benefit from the nickel a month we save Little Rock?
Now, Mayor, you're talking.
I will talk to y'all about it.
Council, let me open for questions if I can. Alderman, which, or Alderman Height?
I guess one of the first things that occurred to me, Mayor, is what percent would you, or would history tell you that the recyclable items are of our present trash loads?
I've got that information for you, right? Let me pass this out.
Just give it to Mr. Sisson and keep talking. That way, we'll keep things going.
Right now, based, as you'll see here, based on the volume of waste landfill, the volume recycle, we've come up with a percentage of recycle. Now, this looks real low, and I wanted to explain that, but this doesn't include yard waste, household chemicals, anything like that, but this, just to kind of give you an apples-to-apples comparison. Right now, Jacksonville recycles at, at the five percent rate. These, these are jurisdictions within the district that have curbside recycling. Jacksonville at five percent, Little Rock at five percent, Malmel at nine percent, North Little Rock at two percent. Just down there on the notes, if, you know, with thirty-one percent of the same number of households that North Little Rock has, Jacksonville recycles almost the same amount in, in just a tonnage. You can see the benefits of curbside recycling on this. Ladies and gentlemen, recycling is not sexy anymore. It, it was five or six years ago, but, but we have to make it easy for people to recycle. We can't, as Mayor Hayes knows, I've said this over and over again, we're never really going to get people's attention and, and involvement in recycling until we make it more expensive to put it in a landfill than to recycle. And, and that day is coming, believe me. It's, it's coming, and not that we're running out of landfill space, but the cost that we take on our, on environment, particularly the energy cost, sixty percent of, of what we throw away is paper. And just stop and think, if we recycled every bit of paper that we had, not just the savings at the landfill, but in all the energy that it takes to run those paper mills down in Pine Bluff and all that kind of stuff, we'd eliminate a whole lot of that, right there. So there are the facts and figures as of the year 2002 for you.
Alderman Height, you start the floor.
Well, I guess where I was going with this was, you know, how much of a savings it would be for, from our department, how much, how much this would cost us, based on these current figures?
Right, right there on the bottom, we figured that it would save you roughly $33,000 in landfill costs by going to curbside recycling, but at a, at twenty-three thousand households, $1.75 a piece, it costs right at $41,000 a month, or $490,000 a year.
Alderman Height, and then Alderman Berry.
Presently, you're doing curbside recycling in Jacksonville, Little Rock, and Malmel, right?
Yes, sir.
When Jacksonville, Little Rock, and Malmel put in curbside recycling, how much input did the residents of those three cities have in decision?
I don't know, George. Do you? Were you?
How much input the citizens of Little Rock had in initiating curbside recycling, or Jacksonville?
These were all decisions by their councils or boards?
Mayor Hayes, you, you probably remember as well as anyone does.
That's, that's the best I recall.
Was it something, maybe we were doing a survey?
I'm sure they had public hearings, things that, and I'm gonna make a proposal here and just add it after anybody makes comments about what I think the best way to go forward. Alderman, Berry, Alderman Height, do you finish?
Well, basically, I just wanted to just make sure that, that if, if we do something like this, I want to, I want to hear from the residents of North Little Rock as far as what, what their wishes or what their wants to be. I'd, I'd hate to put something in mandated that the citizens of Little Rock have got to start paying $1.75 a month for curbside recycling and have less than thirty percent participation. I have a lot of people out there that are upset about $1.75. And I'd be willing to, forty-four cents to reach what I saw, that's, recycling is the right thing to do in our town. In fact, fifty years ago, we never even considered it. But when we hear about the environment, hear about our world, our earth, we need to take care of it, because it is, it is the only one that we've ever had. But I'd like to hear from the residents of Little Rock as to what their wishes, being this goes back to the mayor's question that earlier is, what kind of deadline do we have to work against as far as giving you a decision, so we can give the $1.75 rate if we decide to go in that direction?
I've, like I said, I have a proposal that, that I'll announce and what the councils will consider, will go to, where do you finish? Alderman Berry, and then Alderman Gibson, and then Alderman Thomas.
Yeah, I just wanted to make, that this is particularly clear, that's just thirty-three thousand in the annual, an annual savings. Yeah, that's all I, I wanted to know.
Alderman Gibson.
I just need to, to make sure I understand what you will pick up. What are you currently picking up in Little Rock? Glass, plastic, newsprint, cardboard, aluminum, and steel cans? Right. Corrugated, you mentioned that? Corrugated, I got corrugated in with newsprint. George?
Wayne, Mr. Rathman from Waste Management. Right now in Little Rock, we're currently picking up plastic bottles, numbers one through seven, which are on the bottom. We kind of have a slogan, if the throat is smaller than the base, we'll pick it up. We're picking up aluminum cans, tin cans, we're picking up glass, clear preferably, but we have been picking up the green and the brown. We pick up newsprint, we're picking up particle board, which are the Coke cases or the cereal boxes, as well as newsprint and cardboard.
For this system to work, obviously, we, it's, as with all other services, this is that you either pick, you pick up, and I believe, Mr. Sisson, is the twenty-three thousand four hundred households in North Little Rock, that's single-family, sounds high.
Twenty-one.
Yeah, twenty-one's about what we're doing in sanitation now, has single-family households that we're picking up now. Part of that problem is, is because some groups of households choose to do, some apartment complexes do a dumpster system instead.
Right.
So you can't use our electric numbers, you have to use our sanitation numbers. But if I understand, this is, is like anything else, it's that we do it for twenty-one thousand seven hundred households, or we don't do it. It's not something that ten people on the street can say, "I want to do it." And I, I understand that.
It doesn't work.
I, I agree, it doesn't work.
Well, well, the bid was based on that many residential units, and that's what that price is based on.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
I understand. Also, I, I guess, and look at the numbers, now I'll ask Mr. Sisson, but if it's, the number's four ninety-one, it would, or $1.75 a month, after seven years, based on the three percent, that's gonna go up to about two and a quarter.
Alderman, there is a cap on that.
Yes, sir.
Twenty-one percent total over the life of this contract.
Okay, twenty-one percent.
Yes, sir. Would you be about thirty-six cents, sir?
Okay.
Okay. I, so that's, that's less than the, that's less than 3% compacted, okay.
The 20 was the cap.
20% is the cap, so somebody do some math for me, what does that top out?
Thirty-five cents, takes it to 2.10.
Thirty-five cents. Are you finished, Alderman?
I'm finished, thank you.
Alderman Yildig?
Is, is the program mandatory in Little Rock, do they have to separate their, their trash? There's no separation, you put it all in one bin except for the newsprint, is it, do they have to do that?
No.
So they can just put it out there and garbage, I mean, just like they've been doing if they wanted to?
No, we don't have 100% participation in Little Rock.
Okay.
Yeah, they're.
The participation in Little Rock has been at about 51% in 2002, uh, weekly, and that's a monthly participation rate, uh, I live here in North Little Rock, I think it would be a little higher, I think certain areas, of course, are higher than, than others, you know, out west in Little Rock, participation rate's probably 70%, whereas a little less when you, as you move east, so you have that to consider as well.
Alderman Thomas, I'm sorry, I.
I was going to say, there's apparently some savings to the landfill, does the city want to pay a part of it, uh, for people?
Our, our savings is about $30,000 annual.
Thirty-three, thirty?
Thirty-three thousand.
I think we've got escalation on our landfill costs, that, that, help me out, Mr. Roberts, and they're built in.
I think Mr. Rathbun has some different numbers than I do, and he's much more familiar.
Well, I, I ran your savings a month at about 6,000, which would be about 72,000 a year, uh, just based on the tonnage that I anticipated coming out, out of, uh, North Little Rock, and, and how we bid the process, um, I had your, your cost, and I didn't have 21,000 homes, the bid had about 25,000, it was an estimate, and when I ran that number, your cost was about 43,000, uh, of course, that would be on the bill, it would be a pass-along, so the city, uh, entity itself would actually save approximately 6,000 on its, uh, landfill bill, I estimated about two, 200, 210 tons a month coming out of North Little Rock.
Uh, before I ask Ms. Marshall, Mr. Sisson, uh, if, if we decide to do this, uh, obviously since we, we don't charge anything for sanitation for our citizens, uh.
No, sir.
Uh, how would you suggest that we collect this if we were going to pass it on to the customers?
But we would put on our electric bill, like we used to do the sanitation, I would suggest, Mayor, we have about 36,000 electric customers, but as I told Alderman Gibson, only about 21,000 when we used to bill sanitation, so that would be the way we would.
That'd be very difficult?
It wouldn't be very difficult, no, sir.
All right, Mr. Sisson. Did I say, what did I say, Marshall? I'm sorry, I was thinking.
That's okay.
I'm sorry, Ms. Robinson.
That's, that's okay, I'm in agreement with Alderman Height, you know, especially since we're talking about adding this $1.75 to, you know, the electric bill, I, I think that a public comment or having them come in and kind of voice their, sort of regardless of how we vote on it, but I think the public should have, especially since they're going to have to pay for it whether they want to participate or not, it's been wonderful.
Let me, uh, let me make this suggestion, uh, Mr. Susskind, I'll be the sponsor of a, of a resolution that would authorize me to sign this contract, uh, and have that filed for the next council meeting, uh, I think, you know, personally, I think this is a good idea, I too echo what, uh, Ms. Robinson, uh, commented on, as well as Alderman Height, uh, yeah, I, I have not heard from the public, and what it would be my intent to do is to, uh, have actually three opportunities for the public to comment before I call this for a vote, uh, you know, we'll file it for the next council meeting in April, and then we'll have opportunity for public comment then, as well as the first meeting in May and the last meeting in May, I would propose we, uh, consider it for a vote.
So you've got one more meeting in March, Mayor.
Okay, wait a minute, then.
One meeting in March and two in April, and you'd like to have a contract signed by four, May sixth.
Yeah, then, no, I'm sorry, in April, then, then what I'd do is I'd call it for a vote, uh, the, uh, last, uh, council meeting in April, you're correct, Alderman Thomas.
You know, we keep saying that we don't have any costs, we don't charge, I mean, we're paying one cent tax, everybody, when we say that, I get home and they tell me, what do you mean, you're not paying, but we, we got a one cent tax for that, so we're paying for it.
Well, about 20% of, of that is, is 20 or better is paid for by people who don't live in the city, uh, because of the retail base that we have, and, and Alderman, I, I think you can look around, and, and you've got a, a highway, not a, a road program, as well as a sidewalk program, uh, that, that we just filed this communication, you know, we opened a senior citizen center, I know that you certainly haven't been a real fan of, but, uh, but we are now, I don't know if Mr. Baxter's in the audience, but we've topped 2,500 in membership of that senior citizen center, uh, so those things are turning around and going to capital, a big part of it going to capital, and then a, a half of the operations, now, where are we in numbers, Mr. Uh, I'm glad you brought that up, Alderman, I always like to talk about things where.
I've got one other comment, though.
I'm sure you did.
I've got one other question, too. Uh, we're, uh, nearing 2,600, we were at 2640, I mean, 2540 at the beginning of the day, had another, about 25 or 30 to join today.
Let, let me ask you one question, I know, we dropped, we lowered it to 50, age 50, is that right?
Well, that's what it was at the beginning, yes, it's 50.
Okay, well, um, I'm working on the number of people that's, uh, 50-year-old who live in the city and see what percent that 2,500 is.
All right, uh, I mean, I don't understand the question.
Well, uh.
Out of 60,000 people, he wants, Alderman Thomas wants to know how many are 50 or older?
Uh, I can get that for you. Yeah, we, I can find that out for you sometime.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that, I just want to see what percent.
Sure.
That we're, we're really serving for that 5 million.
It's not 5 million a year, it's 5 million one time, uh, approximately a million was paid by the, uh, state, and, uh, and right now we're somewhere around 500,000 on our annual operating cost.
Yeah, and then, and the, uh, we, we never expected to have 2,500 members by now, or almost 2,600, but we have over 500 a day using the center, um, at last, uh, I guess it was Tuesday this week, or maybe it was Wednesday, we had 560 use the center in one day, so it, it, uh, if you come down there between 8:15 or so and, and about 1 o'clock in the afternoon, uh, it's crowded, there's folks having a big time, and they're in there just, uh, really enjoying themselves and working out, so.
Well, I always like to get in a plug, uh, all right, without objection, uh, or at least without any further modification by the council, then, uh, then Mr. Susskind, if you could sponsor legislation for me at the next council meeting, we'll offer it for public hearing, uh, uh, at that council meeting, as well as the first and second one in April, and it would be my intent, uh, to then call it for a vote, uh, during the last council meeting in April.
Mayor.
Alderman, uh, Vestal, and then Alderman Height.
Uh, Bob, how we handle the situation where, uh, people that we have annexed into the city that don't receive a bill from the North Little Rock Electric Department?
Alderman, there, there are a few, in the prior years, we had some sanitation, but we've sent them a separate bill, it was, looked like electric bill, there, and we sent it just like with electric bill.
Thank you.
Alderman Height?
Uh, just a question for Mr. Rathbun, your presently Waste Management is servicing recycling bins, trailers, whatever, at, like, for example, Kroger up on McCain and, you know, his shopping center, how many of those locations do we have in the city?
Uh, we have one on Pershing, we have one as well at, uh, over there at McCain, as you spoke, uh, we have one, it's, it's actually Sherwood, it's, it's at JFK and, uh, 107 up there at the old Harvest Food, uh, but we're servicing right now two in the city of Little Rock and one right on the edge.
Okay, as far as the ones in North Little Rock, what kind of tonnage are we, are people placing in that on a monthly basis?
The tonnage in North Little Rock is about 30 at McCain, that's the highest tonnage site, uh, there are six sites, um, McCain being the highest, um, and then in Little Rock, the one on Rodney Param being the second highest, uh, the one that's located over on Pershing is the fourth, uh, highest total out of the six that we're currently servicing.
Okay, so, well, you, you caused me to think of another question, but as far as, have you factored in those, the tonnage that's being placed at those recycling bins here in North Little Rock into this equation, and how did, how did curbside recycling affect the use of those over in Little Rock or Jacksonville or, or Marmell when they put in curbside recycling there?
The first part of that question, no, sir, I did not factor it in, I took it as a consideration when trying to figure the, the tonnage that we would get out of North Little Rock, knowing that McCain was our highest site, um, in West Little Rock, at Rodney Param, that's our second highest site, and traditionally, what we've seen over the seven years in Little Rock, that is the, uh, the highest level of participation is in West Little Rock, and it's almost followed our sites, uh, and I anticipate in the, in the area around McCain, uh, that, that you represent and I live in, that that would be a very high site.
So is it conceivable that if we put in curbside recycling, we could remove those bins at McCain?
No, because you, you, most of that's going to come from multifamily, what.
Well, presently, it's come from single-family and multifamily.
Right, it's a combination. It, you would probably see, you know, a little less at, at those sites, but of course, they are for the apartments, and that's why they're set out in Little Rock as well.
Okay. Ms. Robinson?
You mentioned that you have, uh, your containers on McCain and on Pershing, we happen to live in it, War Two, do you have any of your containers, the east end of town?
We had one over there in Rose City at the beginning, but the participation didn't warrant the, the container staying there, and that was, I would say, in, uh, 1996, 97, at the start of this program.
Nineteen ninety-six, that's there.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Witcher?
Mayor, I, I did have one more question for George, is, would there be a deposit on the containers, or, or, you know, anyone, any, any one of you?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir, and, um, through the specifications that we bid, uh, Mr. Robertson and his staff have, uh, prepared exactly how the containers are to be handled on an annual basis, we provide, uh, I think with the city of Little Rock, up to 250 containers, replacement containers, or new home containers, uh, as they're needed.
Any other questions? All right, we, uh, we have an approach, and, uh, and we look to, uh, make a decision the last council meeting of, uh, April.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, let's go to the agenda.
Resolution 0320, Mayor Hayes.
Uh, let me flip over to my agenda.
Yes. Ordinance 0307, Alderman Berry.
Withdraw it, please.
Ordinance 0312, Mayor Hayes.
Read and hold.
This is an ordinance, we fill in ordinance number 7516, adopted January 13, 2003, allowing special use for solid waste transportation in I-2 zone, this is the second reading.
Ordinance 0318, Mayor Hayes.
I'm going to just go ahead and withdraw that and tell, uh, planning, uh, and I, I guess what, what I'm, what I'm, uh, suggesting to the council is that when we refer to another, uh, body, uh, that unless there's an objection, I'm going to ask the clerk to go ahead and remove that from the calendar, uh, and then we'll refile it when it's brought back to us, so if that can be, Ms. Whitby, a, a normal procedure, that when we refer it to another committee or, or group for review, that we simply would remove it from the calendar, uh, and, and then when it's brought back, we'll put it back on the calendar.
Yes, sir.
Uh, can we go to new business?
Yes, sir, resolution 0325, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
It's a resolution approving a 3% salary increase to certain full-time and salaried employees of North Little Rock, Arkansas, and a salary increase to the mayor and for other purposes.
Motion.
Move for adoption.
Thank you. Discussion?
I'd like to amend, please.
Alderman Witcher?
There was a, uh, proposed amendment placed on your desk this evening, uh, and there's several things that occurred, one of those is on the, the land for the mayor, it, uh, covers a 3% increase, um, it also covers a couple department heads that, uh, previously were not covered, that should have been covered, it was an oversight as we worked through this.
I, I second it.
Motion made, uh, and seconded, any discussion on the motion to amend, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
What's your pleasure?
Move for the adoption as amended, seconded.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And I'm not sure if Mr. Mann here?
He's not here.
Uh, well, we thank him, uh, in his absence and look forward to his participation on that, uh, commission.
Mayor, procedural matter, I, I'm assuming that we have a sheet for him.
It's attached.
Attached.
Well, no. It is on mine.
Can you take it off?
Sorry. I've got it.
Thank you, Alderman Witcher, we appreciate your punctuality.
Resolution 0329, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution stating the city council's continued support for the River Rail Project.
Thank you.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0328, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
Mayor, may I, may I come in about the last resolution? There was a, a letter, of course, that it endorsed, when it asked for, uh, study, and one of the things it specifically said was to look at savings for routes, it mentioned only Little Rock, I would hope that that would be all of the transit system.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Absolutely, that was a oversight on my part, because I signed that letter, and, uh, certainly I, I'm sure an oversight on the, uh, drafter's part, and that will, uh, that what, not only will it be corrected, but it'll be accomplished, thank you for pointing that out.
Resolution 0328, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution appointing Stefan Mann to the North Little Rock Advertising and Promotion Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And I'm not sure if Mr. Mann here?
He's not here.
Uh, well, we thank him, uh, in his absence and look forward to his participation on that, uh, commission.
Mayor, procedural matter, I, I'm assuming that we have a sheet for him.
It's attached.
Attached.
Well, no. It is on mine.
Can you take it off?
Sorry. I've got it.
Thank you, Alderman Witcher, we appreciate your punctuality.
Resolution 0329, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution stating the city council's continued support for the River Rail Project.
Thank you.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
In order to submit an ordinance number 7520, first reading.
Uh, please read it.
That one also needs to be held after tread.
This is an ordinance adopted in Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, 2002 edition, first reading.
Okay, uh, Mr. Susskind, you want to explain that to me?
Yes, uh, as you can see at the bottom of the paragraph of amended section 18-36,
This is an ordinance adopted in Arkansas Fire Prevention and Code, 2002 edition, first reading.
Okay, uh, Susske, you want to explain that to me?
Yes, as you can see at the bottom of the paragraph of amended section 18-36, state law requires that three copies be on file to city clerks. The fire department has ordered them. They're in backlog and they have not arrived yet.
Okay, I'm going to hold that.
Ordinance 0320, Alderman Yilding.
Call it.
This is an ordinance, amended ordinance number 7520, first reading.
Ms. Ben Rose, place on second reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance amended ordinance number 7520, second reading.
And Ms. Ben Rose, place on...
I read.
Thank you.
On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance amended ordinance number 7520, third and final reading.
On the question.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Ordinance 0321, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance waiving buffer on certain property located at Lot Ford, Richtown Industrial Edition, to the city of Little Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Move through the rules, place the ordinance on second reading.
Sir, second.
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance waiving buffer on certain property located at Lot Ford, Richtown Industrial Edition, in the city of Little Rock, Arkansas, second reading.
Ms. Ben, the rules placed on third reading. Second.
On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance waiving buffer on certain property located at Lot Ford, Richtown Industrial Edition, in the city of Little Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading.
I have a question.
State your question.
I want you to explain.
Uh, Mr. Boles, tell me about this.
Keith Richardson has Mohawk Carpets wanting to locate a warehouse on Marmell Boulevard.
Okay.
They've entered a contract with the company and then came in for a site plan review. The 15-foot on the south is for utility easement. The way they propose their project, there's no space on this property for the required buffer. Also on the east, well, mainly on the south. South of there, as you can see, is woods, but it is on residential. So it doesn't have any immediate impact on the neighborhood or something like that, but it does, well, buffers required with, you know, rezoning power when you're against residential zoning.
What the planning commission do?
They recommended four, seven to one. This is new construction.
I understand that. The buffer, so the buffer that's being waived is only on the south? Or is it along Marmell Boulevard?
No, sir. The Edwards is on the east. That's an industrial use.
Mm-hmm.
And they're doing a commercial cul-de-sac off Marmell Boulevard. And the buffer is against the residential zoning, which is vacant, you know, woods at this time.
Okay. So I can see where they're putting their trees in the parking lot. Brown cover shrubs, of course, all that's to the, all that would be to the north, correct?
Their first phase is a building to the southeast corner of their lot.
Mm-hmm.
And then they have the slash pattern is a second phase construction. And this doesn't really, it shows truck parking and then trees along the northern landscaping. But there will be another commercial lot to the north of this property.
Okay. Well, and I guess that's the reason somebody didn't vote for it or were planning, was the fact that that's zoned, that wooded area is zoned R1, single-family residential, correct? Is that what you said?
It's zoned residential. I think it's R4.
Oh, it's zoned R4, zoned residential. And if it's developed in the future, then there's not going to be a buffer to the back of that building, correct?
That's right, unless they purchase property and add to it.
I think it's because of the odd twist of the land, the way they're having to plant it in there.
I believe they entered a site plan before they came into the planning commission and got a lease agreed to before we had a hearing.
Mr. Boles, would it, Mr. Susske, would it be possible to require at the time that, not necessarily having it beforehand, but at the time, you know, that, that, when and if that ever should be developed residential, that a privacy fence be constructed?
You could require a buffer there, a full buffer. Because it's dissimilar uses, you could, we could require the buffer on the residential side.
Well, I'm more interested in a fence than I am...
Okay. Well, you could, you could have that as an attachment requirement on this order.
And this one.
They are, they are also having a little bit of a fire rating problem. We're requiring an eight-inch concrete wall on the east and south side because it's so close to the property lines. And there will be, it's inaccessible to the fire department. So we're also requiring solid eight-inch concrete on those two sides to reduce the fire hazard. But yes, we could put a fence along the borderline as...
What's Mr. Richardson going to be doing with this property?
This is a cul-de-sac. He has a Mohawk carpet. It's a national company is wanting to locate there. And they do carpet warehousing.
Mr. Susske, you got a suggested amendment. I need, I need a privacy fence when that become, when and if that became residential or that residential was developed.
Mayor, if you can go on to the next size of size, and then I'll have one drawn up for you.
Because there's another issue that, how far, you're going to require them to build this, this eight-inch thick tilt-up wall on the back of this building, if I understand right.
Yes.
And it's going to be basically, according to the plot here, it's going to be vert, well, you've got a 15-foot easement, easement around the back of the building.
And on the east side, it's about 10 feet.
But how high is this wall going to be before you start with building on the back of that? I mean, it's a pretty good-sized drop-off.
It's going to be excavated and slab built. And then I suppose the wall will be about 15 to 20 feet high. So the wall will be starting, you know, right off the slab up. Uh, there, I'm not sure what the cut is. It's probably six to eight feet. And, you know, we certainly could require a privacy fence along the border on the south side as a condition. Of course, no one's there now, but...
It's going to be so high above that...
It'll be a little bit below the woods because they're excavating.
I think I agree, because there's, there's the minutes of the planning commission meeting and they put an awful lot of rules on this. Also have the second piece of legislation is that we're doing the screening ordinance before we even rezoning the piece of property. And that's the next piece of legislation.
Yes, this property is also, it was zoned to C4 for a car lot about eight years ago. And that did not come around. And now they're wanting to do warehousing, which is requiring a light industrial use. And those could have been introduced, you know, reverse order, but...
I think we need to go to number two and then...
All right, well, Mr. Susske works on my fence. Let's go to Alderman Witcher.
Mayor, I would still like to make a comment.
Sure.
Based on our history on Warden Road, I'm, I've got to tell you, I'm a bit concerned about this. Uh, and, you know, while I appreciate the fact that you want to screen them from a visual standpoint, you know, the noise is the actual problem that we have in those residential areas, if in fact, this area ever develops residential.
I'm just wondering about Mr. Boles, if you want to come back to the microphone. Give me a little, little geography lesson on what that real estate's like out there. That residential, is that, is that going to be, is that going to be residential?
Well, certainly back in 85, when the city zoned it residential, we were hoping some residential would come out that way. We have had some. Mr. Richardson's doing some now. But there are no plans at this time. It could happen. If people would discover that is residential, it could happen. This is not a negative use to residential. I mean, it's a warehouse, but it's not a harmful manufacturing plant or anything of that sort.
Not used car lot with a megaphone out there.
That's right. It's not out noise.
I think with a, with a fence, if that became residential, I feel comfortable about it.
In the, in the actual base part of the building is going to be 15, 20 foot lower than the residential area anyway, right?
Here, he says it's more like four to six feet is where the floor will be to the elevation of where the trees are. So you're not, we're not getting much.
And how much, how, how high of the concrete wall going to be?
Backside. The resident, against the residential.
Can you come on up to the microphone, please?
20 feet.
This is Keith Richardson. He is applicant. He'll know all the answers much better than me.
On the back wall, it's going to be around 20, I think 22 feet. But there's 20 acres that goes from the back of the property line to Crystal Hill Road that is obviously zoned, I think, R1 or R4 currently. But we have been trying to buy the property to Mr. Talbert to take our cul-de-sac. Basically, if we do, are able to acquire the property, that road will go all the way to Crystal Hill. And it certainly will be rezoned, providing the council approves it to a commercial use. But we're certainly willing to put it in the, a fence in the amendment if we need to.
Okay, I think Alderman Witcher. They answered my question about how high that wall was. All right, let's, 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 let me, let me, you know, put this on hold and let's go to 0322. That's Alderman Bestel's legislation, if we could. And then, Mr. Susske, you'll have my amendment when we come back.
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance, we zone a certain property located in Richtown Industrial Edition in the city of Little Rock, Arkansas, from C4 to I-1 zone by amendment ordinance number 3171 of the city of Little Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
I'd like to spend the rules, place the ordinance on a second reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance, we zone a certain property located in Richtown Industrial Edition in the city of Little Rock, Arkansas, from C4 to I-1 zone by amendment ordinance number 3171 of the city of Little Rock, Arkansas, second reading.
I mean, excuse me, I need a motion.
Please move, spend the rules, place the ordinance on a third reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
An ordinance, we zone a certain property located in Richtown Industrial Edition in the city of Little Rock, Arkansas, from C4 to I-1 zone by amendment ordinance number 3171 of the city of Little Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading.
On the question.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
All right, let's go back to 0321.
Point question for you, Mayor. How high do you want this fence?
Oh, about 40 or 50 feet.
All right.
No, I want eight, eight feet.
Six.
Eight.
Eight feet.
Eight.
Screening ordinance.
Eight. Eight feet is fine.
Eight feet.
Okay. What I propose is a new section two, and the subsequent sections will be bumped up one number. Section two shall read, "If any portion of the abutting land south of the subject property shall be used for residential purposes, the buffer requirement shall be an eight-foot privacy fence, which shall be erected within 60 days' notice from the planning department." That the applicant, further, the applicant agrees to this condition.
Well, that's a good lawyer for you. I like that.
Second.
How about a motion to amend?
Some move.
Question made and seconded to amend with those words. Any discussion on the motion to amend?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
All right, where are we now?
It's been read three times.
Question made and seconded to amend with those words, uh, any discussion on the motion to amend?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
All right, where are we now?
It's been read three times.
All right. Alderman Hite. Uh, Hite, Witcher. Y'all been down.
All right, all right, Mayor, I, I still have the concern, you know, while, you know, I appreciate the fact that we're going to have visual, you know, less than the visual impact. My concern still is if, in fact, this turns out to be a residential area behind it, that you still have a noise impact. Uh, you know, and, and again, you know, I'll go back to Warden Road, you know, it's not, the visual impact is not a problem with Warden Road, it's the noise, in fact, from the business activity in conjunction with those residential plots. Now, uh, I mean, if it doesn't develop as residential, then that's, that's fact. But I'm, I still have that concern, and I'm not really sure how to address it at this point.
I, I, I understand what your comments are, I, I, I would hope that, that the council would go forward with it. I think it's, uh, I mean, it's a concern that I, I think that, you know, at least, at this point, that, that it would not weigh, the concern would not raise itself to the level for me to, to, to not support the legislation, at least at this point.
Yes, sir.
Also, keep in mind that the walls is actually going to be an eight-inch concrete wall, which will be certainly a sound barrier, that the fire marshal is required on that back wall, that southern wall, which I think will be more than adequate.
I mean, it, it, to be honest, Alderman, uh, I think what, a lot of what concern is, is risen around Warden Road is because of the outside uses that, that, that property has, has generated. Uh, you know, the, the car lots and the, uh, you know, other things, that a lot of that business activity goes on outside. I, I think that, at least as it's been presented, this is, most of this business activity will be within four walls or thereabouts.
That is correct, it's all inside.
Okay, uh, Alderman. Okay, Alderman, Yildin.
However, I mean, that's, we know the use they're going to use it for, but once it gets zoned I1, then it's I1.
It's already zoned I1.
No, no.
No.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
I thought we just passed Alderman Vestal's place.
Yes, we did.
Well, yeah, we did, so-
It's dip twenty-three.
So, so it's zoned I, that's what I mean, it's zoned I1, so, uh, there could be other uses in I1, and you might not, you might have the noise level.
Alderman Thomas.
Certainly those people who want to build a noise there first. If they want to come in and extirpate, I don't see a problem.
Any further discussion, Alderman Gibson?
I just want to make sure, we're, we are amending oh-three-twenty-one.
That's correct. Well, we've already, we've already amended oh-three-twenty-one.
So, oh-three-twenty-two is passed, we're dealing with the buffer, and we're making the, the condition on waiving the buffer that they put in the fence.
Correct.
Want to catch up to where- Provided development occurs.
Provided there is a development.
Provides there is residential development.
And, Mr. Witcher, and I guess maybe a little later on, it, we need to talk about this whole noise thing again in, before public comment tonight.
Any, uh, any further discussions, uh, we have it amended, we're on third and final reading. Do I get, all right, is that correct, Ms. Whitby? Do I have a motion to adopt as, uh-
Who would adopt it amended?
A motion made and seconded to adopt, uh, final, uh, reading, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Next time's ordinance oh-three-twenty-three, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance we zone certain property located at Cedar and Pine Streets in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, from R4, I1, I2 to C6 zone by amendment ordinance number thirty-one-seventy-one of the city of North Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Please spend the rules, place on second reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance we zone certain property located at Cedar and Pine Streets in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, from R4, I1, I2 to C6 zone by amendment ordinance number thirty-one-seventy-one of the city of North Rock, Arkansas, second reading.
Should we get through this, place on third reading? Second.
On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance we zone certain property located at Cedar and Pine Streets in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, from R4, I1, I2 to C6 zone by amendment ordinance number thirty-one-seventy-one of the city of North Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading.
On the question.
I'm sorry. Question. Are one of Alderman Yildin's questions, can somebody explain this, what's going on here?
Voels, can I?
Yes, sir, uh, this is RC Coburn's property, uh, it's next to the Glover's. He wants the same treatment y'all gave Mr. Glover. He'd like to have downtown on his property as well. If, if, now, this will allow mixed-use commercial residential down by the river.
And, and this does not, the, one of the things that we did for Mr. Glover because of, of the acquisition of some of his property, was one of the conditions that we agreed not to condemn. Uh, that in no way, uh, has any implications in this. Not that we would.
This is just a rezoning.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Also gets rid of I plan.
Yep.
Uh, can I have a motion to adopt on third and final?
Some moves.
Motion made and seconded that we adopt on third and final reading on the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Ordinance oh-three-twenty-four, Alderman Vestal.
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance we zone certain property located on Montale Boulevard in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, from R4 to I1 zone by amendment ordinance number thirty-one-seventy-one of the city of North Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Please spend the rules and place them on second reading. Second.
On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
An ordinance we zone certain property located on Montale Boulevard in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, from R4 to I1 zone by amendment ordinance number thirty-one-seventy-one of the city of North Rock, Arkansas, second reading.
Spend the rules, place your ordinance on the third reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
An ordinance we zone certain property located on Montale Boulevard in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, from R4 to I1 zone by amendment ordinance number thirty-one-seventy-one of the city of North Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading.
On the question.
Gibson.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
We're, we're, I want somebody to explain this one to you.
I second that.
This is property next to the Waffle Baker, and, uh, it's behind Fuller and Sons, it's on Montale Boulevard. Uh, they're wanting to expand again, and they find themselves owning some R4 property, and have plans to do some warehousing type, uh, use. And the applicants here did.
So, so there's already plans for, for expansion of the existing business onto this? We're not just rezoning it just to have more industrial property?
It's not, the actual building, it's, it's behind the Fuller Hardware Store, which is Grinnell, Tyco, you know, that leases twelve thousand square feet from it. They've, uh, expressed the interest of leasing five thousand square foot as warehouse, and, uh, the, the rest of it will be basically spec warehouse space. But we also have roughly thirty, thirty-five acres from the property we just discussed, all the way to this point. We feel like that whole area will, will be obviously rezoned to an I1 industrial use.
Okay.
Uh, let's get a, anytime, anytime we're, we're interrupted, I want to get a motion, uh, then to go forward on option for third and final, so is there a motion that-
Some moves.
Second.
On the motion to adopt on third and final.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Hite.
That's it, isn't it, Ms. Whitby?
Did Hite and Witcher both answer me?
No. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, now it is.
Public comment, council? Alderman Yildin?
Uh, tonight I, I talked, uh, with a gentleman, uh, from Greater Little Rock Transportation Services, and, uh, you'll remember the problem that we had with, uh, CADA, with paratransit, and picking people up, and then them getting bumped off when they were going to the, because they might be going out of the area, like to St. Vincent's or something like that. Uh, I'm going to be talking to him, and I think the mayor's been talking to him, about, you know, maybe a, a way that we can, uh, help solve that problem for people, uh, so they don't get bumped off, and, uh, so when they need to go to the doctor, even if it's out of the area, and, and links can't take them, paratransit links, I think is what it's called with CADA, that these people can come in. Uh, having said that, too, I mean, I think we need to look at, you know, whatever, we, we did have some unbudgeted funds, I believe, uh, out of what we pledged to CADA, and we might need to take some of those funds and put a limit on it, but, but have it so, uh, these people can get taken to the doctor, and where they need to go, without getting bumped off by somebody going, you know, to the movies. Uh, so anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, and I know the mayor's been talking to them, and I'll also be talking to them, and see if we can work out some kind of, uh, solution to that problem.
Alderman Thomas?
Uh, I have about three things, one of them here, on Haley Street, we have, uh, some bamboo, uh, uh, bushes, whatever you call them, in the back of the, some people's yards out there, and it's a terrible situation. The, the birds that come in there, and the odor is so bad, uh, the code people have been working, they've, they've been doing whatever they can. I guess there's not really much that we can do on that, except the health department's found it's a real problem. And I'm just hoping that there'd be something we could do. I talked to the owner tonight, he's out, he doesn't live there, he's, he's out of the city, but, uh, the neighbors are having a very, very hard time out there. It's, it's such a sickening odor, you just can't, you can't imagine, you just have to-
Mr. Susskey, excuse me, Alderman, Mr. Susskey, you take a look at it, if that's a public health issue, I think there are certain steps that I would imagine we have the authority to do. And if you'd work with code and, uh, and public works, let's see what we can do.
Mayor, we've faced this before, and we notified the owner, if they don't correct it, they're going to face fines in court, and about two weeks later, they had it cut down, and I'm sure we can use that tool again.
Let's, uh, let's visit with Mr. Thomas and find out where this is, and, uh, and then let's see if we can get busy, and we don't, we, we take public health seriously.
Will do.
It, it is, it's a terrible situation. Then, uh, one other thing, uh, uh, I, I don't guess I need to bring it up tonight, but the people in Fairfax are, are quite upset over the letter we've written. I'm telling them we're going to change the name of the street, uh, name, so, uh, that'll, that'll probably come another time. There may be some here this evening, but I have the letter and the petition here. Mister, uh, I guess, uh, who is our JP out there, uh, Mast?
Mm-hmm.
And others are very concerned about it, so, we want to keep that consideration. I'll talk with the others about that. Then, I personally would like to hear their, the Alderman that went to Washington, give us a report, what we, what we learned.
Well, I'm sure after the council meeting, we'll, they'll be happy to share it with you.
You don't think the public would like to know that, okay.
Well, I, I-
I'm going to cover one of those, I, I have one issue I want to cover, which I have on your table desk tonight, but I'll cover that issue, uh, as part of, as a follow-up to the Washington trip.
That's fine. Uh, any other council member?
Mayor, there is one thing I'd, I'd like to tell Mr. Thompson, you know, one of the things that, you know, Mr. Thomas, I mean, I'm having a lot of trouble with names. You know, one of the things we did learn while we were there, that, of course, our, our trolley system now is, is fully committed and funded, uh, with fed funds, then the only thing that we like now is the money from Little Rock, which is about ninety-eight thousand dollars, and that will cover, cover all of phase one. So, it's, it's completely paid for at this point, with the money that we've committed also.